December eighteenth, regular meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item Nine. If you are interested in speaking at public comments, please fill out a comment card. They are located right near the entrance where you came in and they will be picked up right before the superintendent's report. At this time, would you please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
... certified by the United States of America and to the Republic of America, our nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and ever so far.
All right. Thank you for joining us here this evening. Before we get into everything, just wanted to take one moment because we had an unusual event this week. And words really cannot express the grief our community is feeling over the loss of a student that we had this week. Our deepest sympathies go out to everyone affected. And I would love it if you would please join me in a moment of silence to honor Tessa Stanley and to provide a space for reflection for all of our students, staff, families, and community members. Thank you. Now to the other emotional end of the spectrum, we have a wonderful thing to celebrate tonight. Today, we are going to have a recognition for our 2023 MHSAA State Champion Division Three Boys Varsity Football Team from Forest Hills Central. Doing the honors this evening will be Assistant Principal John Distefano.
Thank you very much. If I could have the student athletes and the coaching staff come on up here, please, and stand up front, I would appreciate that. I'll look at your smiling faces. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to recognize the remarkable achievement of our state championship football team and to honor the driving force behind their success. First, we'd like to recognize the amazing accomplishment of our student athletes. This team has seven all-conference members: Ty Hutkins, J.T. Hartman, Macy McDonald, Nolan Harte, Max Richardson, Brady Drewke, and Joey Wing. We have four honorable mention all-conference members: Jay Coe, Lucas Forz, Orion Roskam, and Quinlan Sutherland. They were the OK White Conference Champion, MHSAA District and Regional Champion, six members of the Michigan High School Football Coaches Association All-Regional First Team: Joey Wing, Max Richardson, J.T. Hartman, Lucas Forz, Ty Hutkins, and Nolan Harte. Four members of the Michigan High School Football Coaches Association All-State First Team: Joey Wing, Max Richardson, J.T. Hartman, Ty Hutkins. Ty Hutkins was named the 2023 Michigan's AP Division Three-Four Player of the Year. Tim Roden was named Division Three Head Coach of the Year. Tripp Gallery was named a Division Three Assistant Coach of the Year. And of course, we were the MHSAA Division Three State Champions. The team was also honored by the Michigan High School Football Coaches Association as an academic all-star team with a cumulative grade point average of a 3.984. Please join me in congratulating our 2023 Division Three State Champion, our Ranger Football Team. Now, I'm delighted to introduce our team head coach, Tim Rogers, the architect of our football program. Coach Rogers has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to excellence, fostering a culture of discipline, perseverance, and teamwork that has led our team to unprecedented heights. Under Coach Rogers' leadership, along with a dedicated and very talented coaching staff, our football team has not only achieved victory on the field, but also exemplified the values we hold dear at Forest Hills Central. Through countless hours of dedication and hard work, Coach Rogers and his staff have instilled in our student athletes the importance of resilience, sportsmanship, and the pursuit of greatness, both on and off the field. The journey to becoming a state champion is not an easy one, and Coach Rogers has guided our team with passion, expertise, and a deep understanding of the game. His strategic brilliance, coupled with the ability to inspire and motivate our athletes, has created an environment where every player and coach has the opportunity to thrive and contribute to the collective success of the team. Beyond the wins and accolades, Coach Rogers has been a mentor and a role model to our students, imparting invaluable life lessons that extend far beyond the football field. His dedication to fostering character development, academic excellence, and community engagements reflect the holistic approach he and his staff have worked tirelessly to instill at Central High School. In conclusion, as we relish our first football state championship, let us express our heartfelt gratitude to Coach Rogers for his tireless effort, leadership, and unwavering commitment to the success of our student athletes. Please join me in giving me a round of applause to the driving force behind our state football championship team, Coach Tim Rogers.
This wasn't planned. On behalf of our entire football team and staff, thank you very much. It was a pleasure representing Forest Hills. Hopefully, we did it with class and dignity. A lot of our work paid off at the end, and these kids and these coaches are fantastic. Thank you. Brady Drewke up here. Russell Driver. Chase Anbar. Ford Lawson. Andrew Ford. Lucas Forz. Blue Four Team. Matt Gady. Jacob Harlow. Nolan Harte. J.T. Hartman. Jack Anderson. Sam Bushow. Roman Bravo. Randy Hergens. Those are basketball players. Jay Coe. Also basketball. Cohen Dawson. Honor D. Lorenzo. Sandra Dixon. Cohen Dawson. Quincy Henry. Max Holm. Alan House. Ty Hutkins. Bryce from Jenkins. Jay Coe. Alex Porf. Eli Lippach. Jason McDonald. Mike the Middle. Cedar Middle. Alex Bowler. I sent Alex Porf. He's other sports. Floyd Murray. Brady Drewke. Adam P. Trump. Bean Robbs. Max Richardson. Orion Roskam. Ty Ryan. Matt Serin. Pat Sexton. Isaac Steffen. Quinlan Sutherland. Parker Udi. Joey Vanderwee. Nick Williams. Trevor Lee. Joey Wing. Last but not least, Jaycee B. Teal. Thank you all. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, everyone. We're really glad that the, some of the coaches and the kids were able to come out today. And we know it's a very busy time of year and a lot of them multi-play basketball and wrestling and things like that. What I will do is I'm going to take a really quick, brief recess, so all of the students and the coaches have time to exit if they wish to do so. All right. We are back, and we will be moving on now to the consent proofing. Can I please have a motion to consider the consent proofing tonight?
Motion to approve Items Five A through C.
Support. All right. Is there, are there any items a board member would like to pull out for special consideration? Anything super intense people that you'd like to draw our attention to? Okay, great. Let's move right into a curriculum update from Mrs. Tryon.
Yeah, so tonight we're going to be asked to approve the purchase of two books for use in Central Woodlands, House of Rest, and Insignificant Events in the Life of a Cactus. It's so, it's one of the most delightful books I think I've read this year, so highly recommend. Those were up for thirty-day review at last meeting, and then tonight we will vote on those. We have no new materials or curriculum to consider or to review for January. At our meeting this month for curriculum, we heard from administrative vertical teams, which are championed by John Haga, principal at Central Middle, Don Herma, who's the principal at Meadowbrook, and Amy Pallo, who's our Eastern High School principal. These vertical teams have focused on streamlining, streamlining practices between all three of our attendance zones that they represent in the areas of culture and climate, instructional leadership, and also PBIS implementation, so that families who might have students in various schools or staff who work across the district and just overall standards and practices are aligned. This is accomplished in a variety of ways under their leadership. They are looking at increasing staff participation at extracurricular events, staff recognition, sharing of NWEA, MSAT, PSAT data to get a better, bigger-picture view of district strengths and weaknesses, trends in learning, and also K-12 behavioral data to just evaluate trends in behavior, methods of communication with families, different behavior responses. It was really great to hear about their efforts in their buildings and attendance zones to further that goal that we have of that one at the HPS.
Perfect, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Tryon? Okay, well, let's move on to our finance update from Mrs. DeBoer.
Okay, well, Mary and I were at the meeting and poor CJ was homesick. So, I'm not going to do as well as CJ does, but I will give it my best, although my report's a lot shorter than his last one, so. Anyway, there are no purchasing requests this month, and presented monthly financial statements through November, we are on track with funding on being at forty-two percent through our fiscal year and twenty-seven percent through the school year. Ryan Kimball, our Director of Safety and Security, along with Darrell Hofstra, the Director of Transportation, presented a more detailed information about a potential cell tower at Eastern Campus. We have Safety and Security is at the forefront. Right now, there's no cell rece, the cell reception continues to cause safety concerns at Eastern Campus, and they did mention, one, there's a student, right, has diabetes, there's an app or something that they use that requires cell usage, and so there's a couple of concerns in looking in that. There's third-party safety and security audit last year highlighted this as a major concern. The challenges with school day and after-school events include, including large gatherings at the athletic events. And then, the district met with two partners. One is Tower Ventures and Smart Link. Tower Ventures would install the tower, and Smart Link represents Verizon Wireless. And they walked the property to determine the best location, and Mary and I got to see, I don't know if she's got, I know Julie has pictures and stuff, but we got a chance to see the, the different views, oh, there you go. Yay. The different views even of what the cell tower would look like from different vantage points or surrounding the property as you're coming in on down some of the roads, so. And the cell tower is to be placed, I believe, behind the building. I'm going to get my bearings here. North of the football field, correct? And behind what we have as kind of the, say again, the shed. There you go. I was like, okay, what's that? The shed. So, we did have additional questions that we asked them, but those are going to be addressed as well. There's an informational meeting that they will have on January eleventh, six-thirty at Eastern Middle School, High School Auditorium. Tower Ventures, I'm going to go back through, it would install the tower, and it's for free, right? There's no cost to us. Smart Link represents Verizon Wireless, and they walked the property to determine the best location, hence the pictures. There's a potential lease with Tower Ventures. The initial term is five years with an option to extend five years in five-year periods. The rent is nine hundred dollars per month, and the initial setup is for Verizon. And we have ability to co-locate with other carriers, which would in turn bring additional revenue to us with, with those additional carriers for basically renting out the tower, correct? Stop me if I'm messing anything up, Mary. So, the, like I said, the informational meeting will be at Eastern Middle High School in the auditorium on January eleventh, starting at six-thirty PM, and the board will consider the lease at our January fifteenth regular meeting. Any questions or? Questions? No cost to us. We collect rent off of it, right? And there, like I said, we had additional questions that were asked about it, and then they're bringing the additional information at the information meeting, and it gives parents a chance, a time if they have any more questions, that we'll be happy to put that on there, so this team can bring those to the table for us, so.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Warren. Yes. All right. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? All right, maybe we have a roll call, but then please. Yes, Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
You missed that mic?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBoer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van?
Yes.
Mrs. Koval?
Yes.
Dr. Felsen?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
All right. That moves us over into informational items. Do you have any informational items to discuss? Just the superintendent, all right, then we will move over to the superintendent's report, and as a reminder, if anybody has not filled out a comment card that wants to speak, now's the time to do so. We'll be picking them up shortly.
I just, again, want to thank the community. As Dr. Felsen said, we suffered tragic loss last week of a student, and I want to thank the Forest Hills Public School staff who really rallied around the Eastern schools and provided incredible support. So, not only do we have support from our own internal staff from all of the district, but also from the community, and they rallied around our students, our staff, and especially around the Stanley family, so thank you very much for that. It was, the generosity was felt and the compassion for the family, so thank you, and we appreciate that very much. This is a week that, on Friday, we end our first semester, so Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday are exams in the district, so if you have students in the district, be sure that they have a good night's rest and come out fueled to take their exams, so. Everyone is looking forward to the holiday break, including staff. Students are very anxious. They're more anxious for the fact that I haven't been able to call a snow day, so I keep hearing that, and I keep saying, I have my fingers crossed, my toes crossed, that our weather stays perfect and we get to Friday and I don't have to call a snow day, so. I know that I'm letting down a lot of students, because when I go throughout the district, that's the number-one question they ask me is, "Are you ever going to give us a snow day?" And I keep telling them, if I'm lucky, I won't have to, so again, my fingers are crossed that we'll get through. And so I wish everybody a happy and safe holiday, and we look forward to January when we welcome all of our students back from the break.
All right. Thank you very much. Board Communications. I have one. I wanted to give an update on the superintendent search. First, I want to say thank you to our community for filling out the survey. We received over seven hundred responses, and our search firm, MLI, went through all of those. They also conducted numerous focus groups, so thank you to all of the staff and boosters and students and everybody who participated in those. MLI took all of that information that was gathered and sifted through it, found the common themes, what was important to the district to be looking forward to, make sure that that goes out in our posting, which did go live on Friday. So, a lot of the work for us at the moment is done as we wait for wonderful candidates from all across the country to find the posting and apply, and we will move forward with that in February. Any other communications? Nothing. Okay, this is, this is quick this week, or this month. Flying by so fast that it feels like a week. All right. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. Per established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. All right. First up, we have Paul Doyle.
Good evening, Paul Doyle. My address is on file. I'm a staff member of the school district, among other things, and I'm here tonight as a bus driver and as a staff member. I've been driving a bus for now three years, and what is becoming well apparent is that the shortages that we are experiencing in key staff roles is not a temporary condition, and the forecast is not promising. I would submit to you that we understand less about what is going on than we could, and so many of our staff members and our leaders are working furiously just to sustain operations that we haven't been able to study the deeper causes and roots. And it's not just Forest Hills, it's the county, it's the state, it's the nation. And so, my request to Superintendent Shubal and the board is, can we make a commitment in this coming year to get to some good understanding through better data and work cooperatively with our neighbors and colleagues in the, in the county? I know that there is a strong interest in finding solutions to these staffing challenges because we're at risk of not being able to deliver core services to students and families in the community. So that would be my request to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Breezy Rusher?
Hi, oh, I'm loud, sorry. Hi, everybody. I am an alumni from Forest Hills, so I am happy to be semi-sort of home, away from home, and I just kind of wanted to come up here to voice some concerns as an alumni, but also as someone who has a younger sibling in the district. I've heard some concerns, both of staffing and support issues, but also not utilizing resources, specifically in the case of Global Learners Initiative GLI. I heard there was some pullback from the program and some detracting of events, program and workshops, and staff educating systems. And I've also asked my brother some things, like what goes on in the district, and I will admit, he is a kid, so he could have not told me everything, and so I wanted to come up here and talk to some adults at the table and kind of just ask what was the reasoning or what's going on, why such detracture was seen. I've been on this school board meeting one time prior to this, and I was assured at that time that GLI wasn't going anywhere, and the program was still going to do well and expand and, you know, increase inclusivity and awareness, as well as boosting in that cultural competency, educational practices. And I just want to make sure this school board plans on upholding that moving forward in the next year. But yeah, that's really all I had to say. Other than that, it's nice to see everybody again. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellie McDowell?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ellie McDowell. I graduated from FHC last May, and I've been part of the, I was part of GLI in the district for nine years. Over the course of that nine years, I've participated in workshops, I led workshops, and I was given the opportunity my senior year to be in the room for the Institute for Healing Racism. That institute changed my life. My family's been part of GLI for years, and that taught me a lot about loving the people around me since before I was even in school. GLI's helped me, helped teach me that the people around me all came from different backgrounds and that those things should not be something that defines them in my eyes or anyone else's. GLI is part of the reason I'm going to college to become a teacher. I can't wait for the day that I get to change someone's life like GLI changed mine. Not only did it teach me about showing kindness and love to the people around me, but it gave me some of my best friends. All in all, I don't know what I would have done without it in high school. All in all, I don't know what I would have done without it in high school. It's also my understanding that the Institute for Healing Racism offered this school year is only one day instead of two. I also understand that the name has been changed and it's being contracted out to a service provider, and thirdly, that it was not only not offered to the people in the community, but not the high school seniors either. Members of the board, I cannot begin to express to you the importance of the Institute. I can't explain the feeling of sitting in that room full of faculty and other community members and furthering my GLI education alongside them. Day one was just a setup for the raw learning we did on day two. You can't have something like that and do it in one day. Furthermore, the adults in the room made comments to me and my friend, Grant Dean, about how amazing it is, it was to have us in the room. They were so excited to see students, so excited about learning, and to help teach them a little bit of what we already knew from our years in the program. They also made comments about how amazing it was to be able to hear what exactly was going on in schools, because the adults don't see that. Overall, I'm asking you to please reinstate the GLI program in the district. Please bring the institute back. Please allow my sisters and future high school students to experience the beauty that is GLI like we were promised at the last meeting that Breezy was at and that I was told was going to happen last time I was here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dudley? Dudley? Okay. Vincent Mahar?
Vincent Mahar, you'll find me at 6860 Cascade Road. This speech is rated PG-13 for language represents my views only and not any organization that I'm affiliated with. We sit at the crossroads of three major holidays. The first, national, the second, religious, and the third, recordian. Thanksgiving's message of cooperation and gratitude resounds clear 402 years later. The pilgrims where religious refugees on the Wampanoag tribe showed them unconditional grace. They represented the best of Native Americans, saving the pilgrims from certain death with new world knowledge. The pilgrims reciprocated in kind, sharing technology, and fighting to protect their new family against a brutal Nervigance tribe. Through shared values and in thanks, they broke bread together. Massasoit and Bradford swore peace in a treaty that remains unbroken to this day. I am thankful. I am thankful for Tamasha James. It took guts for her to host a limited public DEIB informational meeting on October 24th. After that, Ms. James followed up, and she followed through, answering my questions. And a record of this is available for view on the Forest Hills for Just Education YouTube site. Of all the administrators that I have encountered, she has been the most open and forthright with me. I may not agree with her in certain tenants of DEIB or SEL, but Ms. James has engaged me in a respectful, reciprocal, Socratic dialogue. And through such means, hearts and minds can be changed. I'm looking forward to future engagements, and I hope Ms. James will take the next step in transparency, inviting the general public to our next DEIB meeting on February 27th. Christmas is here. Be you Christian or not, anyone can appreciate the season's spirit of humility and hope. I am thankful for Ms. Tryon. Last meeting unprompted, she shared that the curriculum purchasing orders and resource requests can be found in the board book as nested links in the curriculum committee's posted agenda. Now, it takes a humble person to realize that the board serves the people of the district who are then owed their transparency. She gave that transparency freely and unprompted. I'm hopeful that you all will work with us towards similar transparency in the coming year. Finally, New Year's shall arrive, a time for reflection and resolve. You and I both want this school district to improve. We desire lessons that uplift students to develop into ethical, innovative citizens. Through such reflection, I will double my resolve to help you see the demotivational books that should be archived in public libraries, bookstores, and personal homes that have no place in an inspirational instructional school library. Even if that means reading through every passage of incest, rape, and bloodlust that rots the school bookshelves, so that you may strengthen your resolve to stop the district's glorification of anti-human values. In reflection, I thank this board and the administration for taking ginger steps towards engagement and transparency. I hope that this will continue more in earnest in the next year. Good day.
Thank you. Pam DiTono? DiTanto? Sorry.
Good evening. I'm Pam DiTanto, 595 Two Mile Road. And I'm here to address the board in regard to the proposed cell tower on the Forest Hills Eastern campus. I don't know if this is a done deal, if it is already something that has been approved and is going through or not. But I think it is important that the board understand and be educated toward all aspects of what goes into putting such a structure on a school property. It's not just about collecting rent, and it's not just about getting money, and it's not just about the safety and the security of the school and campus. While that is the utmost importance, the security and the safety of students and staff, that safety and security goes beyond just providing the cell service. There are potential health-related risks to having a cell tower in such close proximity to a occupied situation such as a school. There are alternatives to a cell tower that would boost cell service to students, staff, patrons, others that are using the campus and the facilities there. So, I hope that the board is open to looking at some of those alternatives, looking to some of the verified and studied health issues associated with living and attending school in such close proximity. And this isn't the first time that we've addressed this issue. I know that many on the board aren't aware of the three past times that we've had to address the safety of students, not only to have cell service, but to limit their exposure to the electromagnetic radiation from the cell tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe DiTanto?
Hi, I'm Joe DiTanto. We live on Two Mile. We're probably one of the closest neighbors to the school. That was Pam, my wife, you probably figured. I just wanted to mention that we, first of all, thank you, all of you, for what you do. I would just ask that if the board could be and remain open-minded, like you obviously normally do, around this cell tower proposal, consider all the aspects of the proposal, if you could, both for and against, as you kind of weigh through this. It's important, obviously, we have some concerns. The biggest thing I think for us is more information. If we could get more information about it, if we could get, I'd like to, I'm an architect, and I would like to get more aspects on it if I could, not hate, just aesthetically, what it's going to look like. I mean, obviously, we've all been part of this valley here for some time now, and we're used to it, and change is sometimes hard. So, if you could, yes, if you could kind of help us through some of those things that you're considering, we'd appreciate it. Kind of help us sort of digest that and see how it really impacts us and the neighbors around the school, and even just from a visual perspective. So, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Phil Skex?
Well, President Foulson, Superintendent, entire school board, my name is Phil Skex. I'm the state representative for House District 80. That includes all of Cascade Township and two precincts in Grand Rapids Township. So, a little bit less than half of the Forest Hills School District area. Just wanted to come to you here at the end of the year and give a little bit of an update about what we've been doing in Lansing. So, I've broken this down, I think, into our top 10 things. I'll try to reach it here in the next 2 minutes and 40 seconds. Number one, per pupil funding. We have the largest school aid budget in the history of Michigan, $21.5 billion. The highest per pupil student funding in history, up an average of $450 to $9,608. That comes out to 9.1 million additional funds for Forest Hills Public Schools. Number two, special education funding. For the first time in the history of the state, we were able to fund, the base funding for special education at 100%. That comes out to just a little over half a million for Forest Hills. One of the aspects that I'm actually working on legislatively is dealing with ABA therapy funding in schools, so we'll be in touch with that as we move forward. Number three is dealing with the teacher shortage and the supply of certified professionals. In this budget, there was over $370 million to try to support and retain quality teachers for the next generation. That include the My Futures Educator Fellowships, to give scholarships for students in higher education, earning their education degree, as well as making sure that we're funding student teachers to get them in the classroom. Number four was the free breakfast and lunch program. Make sure that students are not hungry and ready to learn. Five is a continuing expansion of pre-K with Governor's goal of reaching universal pre-K by the end of her term. That's something that is going to take a lot of work here in the coming years. I look forward to working with you on that as we work between a public and private model to get us there. Number six is dealing with student mental health issues, $300 million for that. For tutoring with the My Back on Track Program, My Michigan Kids Back on Track Program, $150 million. We also have funding for water filters to make sure that all schools are preventing dangerous lead exposure. Then I want to end on the achievement scholarships. Please make sure that your students know to fill out their FAFSA scholarships. There are $5,500 available to each student if they fill out their FAFSA, qualify to go on to higher ed. Thank you for all that you do. Know that I represent you and am a resource, so please be in touch if there's anything I can possibly do for Forest Hills Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Victor Hansby? Has been attending the meeting.
Hi, I'm Victor Hasbey. I am a Forest Hills grad of 2015. Tonight, I would like to speak in regard to some of the district's decisions regarding GLI. Ever since COVID protocols were lifted, the Forest Hills administration made definitive statements regarding the future of GLI. Promises were made publicly, privately, and even in writing via email. Initially, we were told that the program would remain as it was, but that is not the case. The program used to offer a lengthy calendar of opportunities for students, staff, family members, and community members to participate in. Now, the district's DEIB work is limited to students with Forest Hills staff as the facilitators, most of which have been canceled, cut in half, or postponed. We're being told that Forest Hills is taking the program in this direction because the district wants to take, wants to increase its internal capacity in its delivery of DEIB work. Does that mean that the training is strictly to be done by district staff and for district staff? If that's true, then what qualifications are deemed necessary to be completed in order to facilitate the work? I, like all other GLI facilitators, went through a robust certification program through Moosian Associates, which allowed me to lead workshops as well as assist Forest Hills staff in implementing these workshops. That being said, what is the district's future plan to utilize the Forest Hills graduates, community members, retired staff, and other certified facilitators, and their knowledge acquired through the appropriate training to strengthen the work of the new program? One last comment that I would like to make is that Forest Hills has a mission to help all learners reach their individual potential. Now, if all doesn't really mean all, then it would appear that the district is more concerned with dictating what a student's potential will be, rather than letting the student dictate who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Camp?
Good evening. I live at 8302 Mile Road, and I have graduated from Forest Hills and a senior in Eastern. I want to thank the school district and the board for the work that has been done over many years in the Global Learners Program. I'm another big cheerleader for the program. Trainings, including Global Champions, Institute for Healing Racism, and Restorative Practices, provide valuable skills and insights for creating a school district that values each student and each community member. Schools are the backbone of our communities, and they create a strong sense of identity, not only for children, but for everyone. Since my family moved here eight years ago, I've become aware of how this area has changed since I attended college here in the 1980s. Once a manufacturing town, Grand Rapids is now at the cutting edge of medical practice and research. This has attracted an increasingly diverse group of people, and it's important that we welcome all who choose to make this area their home. Doing that requires an understanding of other cultures, languages, and religions. If a pediatric specialist from Syria or a cancer researcher from China move to Forest Hills, as many medical professionals do, but don't quickly feel a sense of belonging, they may leave. Who loses when that happens? All of us. In the United States, we spend a lot of time focusing on our rights, and while this is important, equally important are our responsibilities to others. We need the multicultural knowledge that enables us to understand our neighbors. One story that stays with me is a conversation I had, and I may have told this before, but a young Forest Hills student, and I were talking about food, his family's from India, and I asked him what kind of meat they ate. He replied that as Hindus, they never ate beef, but they did eat chicken and pork. Then he paused and added that when they're in India, they don't eat pork because they have Muslim neighbors there, and they wouldn't want to offend them, since Muslims don't eat pork. For me, this small insight into the concern his family showed for their neighbors spoke volumes about empathy, kindness, and responsibility. I tell this story not to focus on food, but rather on the mindset that prioritizes the needs of others. Every culture has some version of the golden rule. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. But the platinum version takes us a step further. Do unto others as they would have you do unto them. This is the attitude we'd all like our neighbors to extend to us, but doing that requires education. The Global Learners Program has new leadership and is at a critical juncture. There's been a gap in programming this semester, and this has a detrimental impact on our staff, community, and students. I'll add that I work for a large corporation. I've learned so much from this program that I take right into my work there. Specifically, I'm asking that the district make a commitment to match the quality and outcomes of our global learners programming from years past and disclose how those are assessed, and then restore five days to GLI if possible.
Thank you. Thank you. Ed Oofedel?
Hello, my name is Ed Oofedel. My wife and I live in the district on Scarborough Drive. Our son graduated from Forest Hills Central in 2017. First, I want to say I was glad to see the support of most of the voters in our district for the proposals in the recent election. Thank you. In the past year and a half, I have spoken during public comment period here on several topics. I want to return to one of those topics with an update on recent developments. In 2022, the Right Place Grand Rapids published a report, "The Greater Grand Rapids Tech Strategy." I continue to recommend this report to all board members. The Right Place is a public-private regional economic development organization, and the 2022 report describes a plan for the region to become a major tech hub in the Midwest. We're talking about joining cities like Denver, Nashville, Salt Lake City, all which have vibrant economies due to becoming tech hubs. In Greater Grand Rapids, the tech sector would grow from 6% to 10% of the jobs in the region. This fall, there's been some serious steps to reach this goal. Grand Valley State University, where I work, has announced its Blue Dot Initiative to align college curriculum, research, and internships to support West Michigan's move toward tech hub status. The state government has pledged $30 million to Grand Valley for facilities to support Blue Dot, and in fact, Governor Whitmer was here in Grand Rapids today to sign that legislation. The Right Place hosted Tech Week Grand Rapids in September to showcase the region's vibrant tech community. Events include hands-on tech exhibits and panel discussions, pitch competitions, and networking opportunities. GDSU and Michigan State University were big players in Tech Week GR, and Tech Week 2024 is scheduled for the week of September 16th. Put that on your calendar. This is coming to the region, and my question to the board is, how is the school district, the Forest Hills School District, a part of the plan? Are we creating age-relevant exploration opportunities and technology careers for elementary, middle, and high school levels, so all students are exposed to real-world opportunities in tech? so all students are exposed to real-world opportunities in tech? The plan also involves recruiting tech specialists from other parts of the country. To echo the previous speaker, will the district and its culture be seen by them as an attractive place to live? I think this would be a great topic for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Salas.
Hello. Hi, my name is Laura Salas. Um, I'm also here to talk about GLI. Um, so I graduated from Forest Hills Central in two thousand and twenty. Um, throughout my time at Central, I was in student council, theater, choir, united prayer, PACE, and GLI. I'm currently a senior at the University of Michigan, where I run one of the largest student organizations on campus. I'm a member of an honor society, and I've been accepted to top law schools in the United States. I say this not to brag, but to make clear that I would not have accomplished most of that without GLI. A lot of my time at Forest Hills was marked by loneliness. I came into the district kind of late, so I never really felt like I had a place where I belonged until I joined GLI. At GLI, I felt welcome, safe, and celebrated in who I was and who I had the potential to be. And GLI has helped countless students to feel the same way. Aside from my personal feelings, the things I've learned in and from GLI have been invaluable in both my professional and education career. It taught me how to properly engage in civil discourse, how to learn from people with different backgrounds from myself, and it motivated me to attend law school. I ask you to consider the amount of students who will be left to feel like they don't belong at Forest Hills like I would have been if GLI continues, um, without all the things it had when I was there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, public comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input, and the appropriate district representative will follow up with those of you who requested it. Do we have any other business before the board tonight? All right, hearing none. I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season, and we are adjourned.